David, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Brooke is not here, but Betty's going to start the meeting.
Let us know when we're.
Yeah.
You're ready.
Yes, we're ready.
I think he said we're ready.
Yes, you're ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will call the meeting to order. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Just second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Communications, is there any public comment?
Good morning, if you are a member as an attendee and you would like to make a comment at this time, please use the raise hand function. Otherwise, if you are on the phone, please use star nine and we will enable that for you. I'll go in the order and the first person that I have is Jenny Turner.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Um, I guess I can't turn on my video, so. Um, my name's Jenny Turner and she/her. And I am the mother of an 11-year-old who goes to West Des Moines schools. And I'm also a school speech therapist with Heartland AEA. And I'm also an only parent. So this past year, I took a leave of absence and did virtual education with my son. And. We, I'm vaccinated, we are careful about masks. I've done what I can as an individual to protect us and I need help because I can't take another year off of work. And my son has been out of school for a year and a half and he desperately wants to go back and be with his friends. And I really need my community to step up and that includes you guys, the members of the state board. I have worked with over the years lots of kids with cancer and diabetes and asthma and lots of other health issues. They would be much more affected if they were to get this super contagious Delta variant. And so what I'm asking you to do is to please issue a public statement asking the governor to rescind the mask mandate ban. So that our school districts can require masks and any other mitigation measures they choose to keep our kids safe. I know there are school boards in Florida defying their governor. The governor of Arkansas has expressed regret about their mask mandate ban. And I think if we put enough pressure from enough places in the community on the governor, that we might be able to make a difference. And that's where you come in. You all got into education to help kids, please help our kids safe. Thank you.
Thanks Jenny. Are there any other public comments?
Yes ma'am, there's a list here, so we'll hit them as we can. I now have Elizabeth Stannick.
You should just turn it back over to you. Seriously. Pass. Award.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes Elizabeth, you can go on.
Okay, thank you, good morning. My name is Elizabeth Stannick. I live in Calendar, Iowa, and I'm the mother of a soon-to-be college freshman. Yay, and two in high school. They are twins. I'm a former teacher, special education and middle school and high school athletic coach. And I am making comments in regard to item 15 on today's agenda that deals with extracurricular interscholastic competition. As I have made public comment through the rules process. And attended the. Public hearing, I wanted to speak to you today requesting, and I read the packet of information, that these rules make provisions to waive athletic ineligible periods for changes in residence and certain open enrollment circumstances. However, the rules in front of you today fail to address children who transfer, as I've learned the term, from private school or non-public to a public school or vice versa. I'm speaking today to advocate for the inclusion of transfer situations for students that are transferring from non-public to public and vice versa be included in your rules or that there be an opportunity for a waiver of the 90 school day ineligible period by mutual agreement of the Board of Directors of the previous school and the Board of Directors of the receiving schools for those in that situation. The reason I ask this. Not only was I affected by this many years ago, and I didn't even know this is still happening. But my husband and I have always tried to put our children's education and well-being at the forefront of our decisions. We don't make decisions when it comes to our children lightly. And so it was a very difficult decision for us at the end of this past school year, one that we contemplated the year before, to remove our two youngest children from the non-public school that they had been attending and enroll them in the public school district in which we reside. Let me repeat, this is our home public school district, the district we have paid taxes to support for the last 21 years. We have since learned that our children would be ineligible for varsity level athletic participation for 90 school days in our home tax-funded public school district. Quite frankly, as a mom, as a teacher, as a coach, but primarily as a mom and a citizen of our state, I find it discriminatory and ridiculous. And I would dare say that the rules discriminate against students that are involved in athletics. Because as a state, as a department and as a board, you do not limit the participation in any other extracurricular activities such as speech, drama, debate, music, band, quiz bowl or anything like that. Nor should we be doing that, that's our job as educators and as a department and a state is to do what's in the best interest of kids. I think it discriminates against children whose families can no longer afford to send their children to a non-public school district. They maybe they still want to, but they cannot afford their situation changed, especially during COVID. You know the effect that it has had on our economy and our businesses. And I also think it can discriminate against children for religious or other reasons. But since hearing this about my children and I am the mama, so I'm advocating for my kids as well as others. I've expanded and advocated for the expansion in the ways that I mentioned earlier. As I, as I mentioned, it doesn't happen for any other extracurricular activity. And I think it's important for all students to be engaged at the highest level possible. In whatever extracurricular that they want to be involved in, whether it's debate, quiz bowl, volleyball, basketball, football, etc. I also think that it's in the best interest of students' mental health, their social emotional development and interpersonal relationships to be able to participate at the highest level possible. It does separate kids from their peers if they are not able to participate with kids of their same age. And I think that's something, especially in this day and age, that we need to pay a lot of attention to, that we are doing what's in the best interest of kids and not what's in the best interest of quality.
Did we tell them about that? We did not, we restarted, I would just.
I'm sorry.
Over time.
You are, so we're gonna limit you to three minutes, so you've, because if you could wrap up, that would be great, thank you.
I will, I will. So anyway, I would just like to put in my three minutes worth of time to say that I feel that that needs to be changed and that we should not be limiting those activities for children. And that is really the job of the receiving school, their staff, their coaches, their club sponsors to make those decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Claire, yes Claire, you're available now.
Okay, and just to remind you all that we're gonna limit you to three minutes, so when your time is up, then I will kindly let you know.
Good morning, Senator Claire Selsey here. Thanks for allowing public comment regarding all these issues. I just want to say that the issue you just heard about and the one regarding masks are a result of bad public policy being passed in the legislature without enough time for public comment. And these are two perfect examples of how that's been happening. So from my perspective, I believe that the Board of Education has a role in asking the legislature to please use common sense during a pandemic and allow school districts to decide and even individual buildings to decide which classrooms need to have masks, whether the whole school needs to have a mask or where the whole district needs to have a mask based on the COVID-19 rates in the school system and in the community at large. We saw last year that school outbreaks and large gatherings made COVID worse. And even though many schools didn't keep track of cases, other public health officials were keeping track of the spread. And it was very apparent that schools were a part of it. To protect students, especially those who cannot get vaccinated and teachers, many of whom died during the last piece of the pandemic. We need to do this and I would ask for your leadership, please, and asking Governor Reynolds to lead and rescind the law, lead the rescinding of the law. We can come back in special session in September and do this. And I would just ask for your support, thank you so much.
Thank you, is there anyone else?
Yes, I just enabled Jessie.
Jessie.
Jessie, you're muted, you'll need to unmute yourself, please.
Oh, I got it, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, good morning, thank you again for allowing public comment. My name is Jessie Richardson-Jones, I live in Des Moines. I'm the mother of two children, one of whom is a third grader at Perkins Elementary in Des Moines Public Schools. I'm also a PhD-trained scientist and a professional science and medical communicator. On Monday, as I'm sure you've heard, Dr. Helen Eddy, the Director of Polk County Health, said to Polk County residents, if you remain unvaccinated, you will get COVID. The only question is how sick you will become. And she urged everyone eligible to get vaccinated as soon as possible. But my third grader and every other child under 12 cannot be vaccinated yet. What should we do to keep our children safe until they can be? While we know that children are less affected by COVID, they can become quite sick, sometimes for months, and we still do not know the long-term consequences of COVID for our kids. We know that children spread COVID, especially the Delta variant, to others who may become very sick, like grandparents or people who are immunocompromised. And as the CDC told us, the Delta variant, which is as transmissible as chicken pox and is currently filling hospitals in several states in the country, has changed the war on COVID. We must consider every weapon at our disposal to fight it. Now, all the parents I've spoken with want our children safely back at in-person school. While the families of children under 12 don't have the most important weapon, vaccines. One potent weapon we can still use is masking. Masks protect both the wearer and those around them, and they provide the very best protection when everyone is wearing them. The best data we have from schools last year tells us that masks worked to protect kids from most in-school transmission of the original COVID strain. And conversely, schools that did not mask had higher levels of transmission. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC both agree, having everyone masked at schools this fall is our safest option. I'm calling on you to support universal masking in Iowa classrooms this fall. Now is the time to act on this. Please, demand that the governor rescind the mask mandate ban and allow our children to remain safely learning in schools this fall. Please set politics aside and help protect our children's safety, their learning and their families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jean Schilling.
Good.
Jean, my apologies, I hit, I turned you off by accident, you can now speak if you will unmute, please.
Good morning, I am Jean Schilling, can you hear me now?
Yes ma'am.
Good morning, I am Jean Schilling, I am a resident of Manley, Iowa, and am a school board director at Central Springs Community School District here in Manley, Iowa. I, in May, after the governor put the mask restrictions in place, as a school board director, I had to vote to either go against our local public health recommendations or to defy the governor's order. And at that vote in May, I abstained because I could not reconcile the, the risk of defying the local public health directives. And I could not allow our school district to be illegal by defying the governor's order. So I asked for the State Board of Education to please help your local school districts make these proper decisions to keep kids safe. Please allow us, please encourage the governor to allow local school districts to follow local public health recommendations to keep kids safe. This goes beyond just the current pandemic, but for all public health issues. Please restore that ability for local school boards to keep kids safe. And I thank you for your time and for your consideration today.
Thank you.
Erin Perry. Erin, you will need to unmute, please.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, my name is Erin Perry, I live in West Des Moines, Iowa. I am a high school teacher at Valley High School, but I'm also the mother of two children who go to elementary schools and are both under 12. Last year, I'm sure you can guess, as a teacher going back in such uncertain times, I was a little bit terrified. But even last year, our district was able to reassure us with many, many different measures that they were taking, options for our families to be hybrid schooled if they were particularly at risk. But of course, that mask mandate that we were able to have until vaccinations started rolling out was really crucial for having the success we had last year at keeping students in the building as long as we did. West Des Moines Valley only took about a month to be online and the rest of the time we were able to meet in person. This year, because of the governor's ban on a mask mandate, I feel as though our school board and district is completely hamstrung in how they can protect especially their under 12 students. Of course, I'm personally connected to that with my own two under 12s, but I'm really very, very concerned about what will happen at the elementaries for those students who just simply cannot yet be vaccinated. I would urge you, like many have who have spoken before me, to make a statement supporting the rescinding of that ban on mask mandates because ultimately that's gonna be our greatest protection and it's an easy protection. And I really hope that we won't have to start the school year without really anything that we can do to protect our elementary students, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brad Frazee.
Hi, my name is Brad Frazee, I live in Waukees. I have two kids in Waukees School District, I have two more coming up in pre-K. I'm here to echo a lot of the other comments that have been made. I'm asking you all to please ask the state legislature to rescind the mask mandate, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Willett.
Hi, my name is Sarah Willett, I am Iowa COVID-19 tracker. I was partnered with ISEA last year to track as many school positives, both among students and among staff, as well as deaths for staff members. Last year, I was able to track just under 15,000 positives in school districts. That is very much an undercount due to the fact that many districts were allowed to report less than six if there were any number of positives that were under six. All told, we had somewhere north of 26,000 kids and staff members get sick and that extended out into the community. That was during a year where we had a mask mandate requirement in the majority of schools. This year, we don't have that, and when we're looking at Delta, Delta is at least twice as transmissible as Alpha and as the original variant. What we're looking at is schools going dark quickly, staff dying, students getting sick and family members getting sick. As a person with common variable immune deficiency, I am a high-risk parent. My son is not high-risk, but I am. And if we would put him in a regular school, I would end up getting COVID and it would very likely kill me. I'm lucky, I'm privileged, we're able to isolate and stay away from other people and make sure that I don't get this. But I know a lot of high-risk families with high-risk kids and high-risk adults that don't have that luxury, they don't have the privilege to be able to protect themselves like we are doing. I am asking the Board of Education to rescind the ban on mask mandates and let families and communities and school districts make that decision for themselves and protect their people properly. The fact that the state government stepped in and said, we can't use, we can't mandate that other students and other teachers are protecting each other and protecting high-risk people, most importantly. It's legalized homicide and we need to have that taken away. We need the ability for districts to make their own mandates to protect high-risk people who need access to public education. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that if you've joined us recently and you would like to provide some public comment, you'll need to use the raise hand feature. Or if you are on a phone, you will need to dial star nine to raise your hand. Lizzie Gilman.
Hello, my name is Lizzie Gilman and I am an Episcopal priest here in Des Moines. I also have two young children, one who is going into fifth grade, who is 10 years old, another who is going into second grade and they are seven years old. I am also asking to rescind this mask mandate because I feel like school districts, especially ours in West Des Moines, are having to ask families to choose between the physical and mental well-being of their students. We were online last year because we are a high-risk family, however, family circumstances have changed and our children need to go back to school. And so we will be sending them back, but we are very, very hesitant with the, with this present law in place. And as a priest, I can tell you that it is affecting the physical, mental and spiritual well-being of our community, having to look after our children because our children do attend church as well. And so if they are to get sick, we also have immunocompromised members of our congregation who can get sick as well. And so I ask that, I also ask that you please rescind this mask mandate, thank you.
I have a phone-in caller. When I allow you to talk, you'll need to use star six, I believe, to unmute yourself. The last four digits of the phone number are nine four one one, make sure you give us your name, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Hello? Okay.
Yes.
Um, my name is Tanya Keith and I live in Des Moines, Iowa. I have three children that have been through Des Moines Public School System. My daughter graduated last year, I have a son at Roosevelt as a freshman this year. And I have a daughter who is six and too young to be vaccinated. My older children got vaccinated at the earliest possible moment that they could. But I'm actually sitting in your parking lot outside because I could not get in through the webinar link. And I am desperate to make sure that my six-year-old doesn't end up on a ventilator this year. I am old enough to remember seeing chicken pox go through my kindergarten class. I know that every single child in my class got sick from it. We all went home two by two. And I am concerned that not only are we not able to have all children in schools, pre-K through 12 masked this year, but we don't have a plan, I don't know what the plan is for, are we going to identify an outbreak as five people or something ridiculous like we did last year? We need to know when every single child has an illness in our school so that we can act appropriately. What we really need, because I do want the mask mandate rescinded, I want to be able to have masks in classrooms everywhere. It's honestly not enough to have just lifting the ban. What we really need is a directive, a strong directive to the governor to say it is reckless and negligent to not have statewide mandated pre-K through 12 and childcare centers universally masked regardless of vaccination status. I spoke with a teacher from rural Iowa yesterday who is scared that all of these people who are in Des Moines and can drive right down to your office building if they can't get through on the webinar to speak to you. She doesn't have an option, if you just lift the ban, her superintendent isn't going to say, oh, okay, the ban's lifted, now we can have masks. We need, we need our public health officials to step up and do the job. Do the job and tell the governor, we need to follow CDC and American Association of Pediatrics guidelines and we need, frankly, we need masks statewide, but at the barest minimum, we need to have masks in school at all ages for all kids in Iowa. It's not enough just to cover kids under 12. We know that the Delta variant infects kids who, infects people who are vaccinated and gives them a high enough viral load that they can transmit it. So yesterday, when my son went to orientation at Roosevelt and 80% of the kids there were not wearing masks. If there was a child there who has the Delta variant, it is entirely possible, it's almost predictable, that he will get a exposure to the Delta variant and quite possibly will have a high enough viral load that he will bring that infection home to his six-year-old sister. And I would just like to know what you think that will do to a child who brings home this infection and infects a grandchild, a grandparent or a sibling or an immunocompromised parent? It is, it is unconscionable. We need the grownups in Iowa, particularly our public health officials, to step up and do the right thing. I called the governor's office and they gave me this song and dance about, oh, well, your child can mask. Like, we know that that's not going to help. We know that her mask protects her and the other children around her.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to stop you there. We are limiting everyone to three minutes and you've completed your three minutes, thank you very much.
You need to do your jobs. Don't let.
I have the Ready family.
Hi, good morning. I didn't realize the picture that was on there, sorry. I actually think that's actually really good indicative of me as a parent. That is my oldest, Jaya, who is going to be in eighth grade, who is fully vaccinated. My name is Linda Ready, I have two other children under the age of 12 who are unable to be vaccinated. And I have the same concerns that a lot of the other parents and teachers have. I am an educator by profession as well. We all know that based on current literature, science and common sense, we understand that children should be wearing masks, the ones who are not able to be vaccinated. We as a community must do what is right for our children regardless of what a piece of paper or a legislation says. The mask mandates, I believe, are there because a lot of people can't make the right decision on their own. It has to be mandated. There are very creative ideas and creative suggestions that I've come up with, that I've relayed to our. There are very creative ideas and creative suggestions that I've come up with, that I've relayed to our superintendent's office in West Des Moines, along with the principal at our school, Crossroads. But these are all just ideas and suggestions. And the only way that any of these people of power feel that they're able to do things is when they feel like their hands are not tied. And the majority of what I'm hearing is that it can't do anything. They understand that we are sending our children in to a situation where they're probably going to get COVID and they can't do anything. And I've heard from others in administration that the only way that they think that the governor will do anything is if ICU beds are at capacity. I've also talked to pediatricians. I've talked to pediatricians within Blank Park Children's Hospital who've all told me that they are waiting. They're looking for the first two weeks of school to create a huge influx of patients. My children were online last year. My younger two have severe asthma. It is not a choice right now for us to be online for the next school year. All I'm asking is that they're given a chance at education like all the other children have been. Last year was a difficult year for us and they need to be back in schools. And just the fact that we have an opportunity to have all of our children back just by wearing a mask is something that should be taken into very strong consideration. I come from a family of physicians who are wearing N95 masks along with shields, along with the entire headgear, who are not complaining after twelve-hour shifts. We have family in India working to twenty-four-hour shifts sometimes, not complaining about the civil liberties that are not in play because they have to choose, you know, what they have to wear. It is just something that is necessary to protect our children. I appreciate you taking our comments and I hope that we do the right thing for all of our children, all of our families, our people in our communities who are immunocompromised, who have health, pre-existing health conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Andy Kupsa.
Yes, hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify. I am a reporter working on a story about the recent June seventh SER attestation that posed the that there was a mitigation strategy in place that listed testing. Test Iowa is available to any school district. That also claimed that there was mitigation strategies like isolation and quarantine that were being implemented. This document was signed on June seventh by Iowa Department of Education. I've contacted the US Department of Education just for clarification, to understand what, if any, issues there may be claiming those things which are not actually happening. So they just referred me back to the Board of Education. This happens to be going on right now. I don't expect you to answer. But I have been referred back to the Board of Education as the body that can answer questions about the E S S E R document that was signed with potential problems with what is actually going on in the state of Iowa from a mitigation strategy and with a public health strategy. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Abby Kimson.
Hello, good morning. My name is Jonathan Kimson. Abby Kimson is.
I'm standing right here. Jonathan's gonna speak on our behalf.
Thank you for your time today. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. We have deep concerns about the current direction of the Iowa approach to handling the COVID surge of the Delta variant. We are a family of three where my wife is currently pregnant. My daughter is six years old, so unable to take the vaccine. I have been vaccinated. I am very grateful for science giving us this opportunity and I am very trusting that this is the correct thing to do. I am fundamentally disappointed in our governor's approach to masking. I agree, they are not desirable things to wear for hours on end. However, they are the only method that we have of reducing the transmission of what is becoming a highly contagious variant of the disease. Now, there are many mask bans at state level around the country and I have read today that Asa Hutchinson in Arkansas has gone on record by saying he regrets signing the order earlier this year, which prevents mask mandates from being placed into local schools, for instance. I urge that this organization, this group, the Iowa people, get behind this mask mandate. As much as possible, embrace it for a short-term interruption. For long-term gain, we didn't. We should have jumped onto the bandwagon of getting this strictly controlled from the start rather than playing significant catch-up. I have strong fears that my daughter will be exposed in her school, be unable to protect herself, and then pass it back to my wife, who's pregnant, and myself, who is a asthmatic patient. Now, I would very much like to see a recommendation and a push for masks across schools. I would even go so far as to say that I would push for mask mandates to be put into schools. And then we deal with this at a legal level. I think protecting our children is highly important as well as the, the other vulnerable people in our society. Vaccines protect the individual. Masks protect others. Thank you for your time and I'll pass the call back to the chair.
Thank you.
Sue Cahill.
Thank you. I am Sue Cahill. I'm a Title I teacher from the Marshalltown Community School District in an elementary school. I am also a legislator from House District Seventy-One. In the last year, our district did a great job with mitigation strategies for COVID as we knew it. The students complied without issues. They understood why we were doing it, to keep each other and our families safe. The current law that was passed in May in the middle of the night doesn't allow for masking. Since the law was passed, the COVID cases have spread and increased with the Delta variant. I have heard from people who feel it is a parent's choice as to whether or not students wear masks. But there comes a time, and that time is now, that we do what is right for the common good. And we need to look at the common good over individual rights. We need to put aside our personal choices and look at the whole community. I don't like stopping at stop signs, but I do it for the community good. I don't like having to abide by a speed limit, but I do it for the community good. I don't even like wearing seatbelts very much, but I do it for the community good. Please use your position to advise the governor to rescind this law for the good of all Iowans. It is time that we look beyond individual choices and look at the community good. Thank you very much and please use your position to stress that to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more?
At this time, I have no other public comments.
Okay, thank you. Great, now I can move to the directors.
Awesome. So, a few highlights and then I have some handouts we'll go through and I think we'll try and adjust a couple of things for the sake of time. I think David's going to, we're gonna just skip the tutorial for the board on the Google Drive and do that individually. And so after I finish my director's report, maybe take a quick break and then go on to the next portion of the meeting. It should be, we should be good then. So, a couple of things. One is, you should have all received the email that a new board member has been appointed, Rodney Bradley. He was not able to join us this time, but he has been moved in our communication and we look forward to him meeting him at the next meeting. He's from Dennison, Iowa. In my conversations with him, shared he used to be in a police officer. And so we look forward to learning more about him and inviting him to join our team. Also, a new staff update. If you had not received the update in one of our weekly updates, just a reminder that Mindy Nguyen has been hired to be, she'll be joining our team as the agency's equity coordinator and she starts tomorrow. So it would have been nice if she could have met you today, but just wanted you to know that if you start hearing that name and we will certainly have her come and speak with the board, introduce her to all of you, but we're excited about having her on our team and the work that she can do. Very expansive background experience doing the same work at the DOT. So is really equipped to kind of start the grant, you know, start running right from, from beginning. So we look forward to that work, too. A quick SER update. I don't have an update specifically on the funds, but just an update if you did not see that the state did submit their ERP state plan that was required to receive the remaining third of the funding. And that plan has been approved and that money has been received. Districts are asked to do, go through a similar process. Remember, this third allocation had some different requirements with it, but we're excited to have that part done and start making sure we can do the work and the use of those funds, which kind of ties into some of the parts we're gonna talk about now. But at this time, those funds have not been expended, but we do have some statewide plans we'll be sharing with you on what that's going to look like.
Is the accounting and all the funding, extra help working on as you were anticipating?
It's, so far, it's been, it's been great from what I've heard and I have not, I could.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, but yes, it has been really good because it's helped with just the processing part. So yes, that has been good. I think we could, I'm sure they would say we could always use more, but what we, what we've received has been, has been very helpful. So, so, but to align with some of the spending and one of the topics we talked about the last meeting, remember, Mike, I kept saying, if you just give me a minute, I have, we have a big announcement for you. If you did not see the press conference that the governor I held that released some of the pilot programs in the partnership with U of I, that was the, the piece we were waiting to announce on mental health. And another initiative that really is specific to supporting that accelerating learning. So what I'm gonna provide to you, we don't have to spend a lot of time going through it necessarily, is just sort of a one-pager on what that partnership is so that you are informed and aware if you get questions as well. And then the second one, I should have saved one. Can you, I might need to get one back. And then the other one is on the Council Bluffs partnership as well. Just some talking points and, and a couple of things I want to highlight, get that back, thank you. Are, we are, you know, as we go back to when Brad and Amy spoke earlier about our effect size and the impact something could have, we are trying to leverage work that is existing that can help us move forward the fastest with the best results. We're not trying to start anything new, but we want to really try and boost best practices and work that is already in process that these funds can help support and not necessarily be dependent upon, because remember, we're talking about limited funds. But if we can inject these funds into projects that are really making a difference, we can have a greater impact sooner. So the Partnership for Mental Health is one that Dan Clay, who's the dean of the college there, had been working on prior to us partnering with him and developing funds and the practices and having that system in place. But what it does, which is really great, is it helps do a variety of things. One, it will focus on professional learning for educators. They have the research capacity. They really look at expansively the impact this could have and what is needed. And then the clinical services. And so they are able to employ resources, most specifically to rural districts that need this in the event of the things that have happened. We have already employed some of their resources already. And then this will be kicked off at our summit in November that we invite you all to attend. Really what this work can continue to look like and, and bringing it all the partners. There's a lot of partners that will be all in this work and it's not excluding any single partnership. They just have the core experience and the program that was in place already and not that we could help provide additional support to. So we're thrilled about that partnership. The other one focuses more on kind of that accelerated learning. So when we talked before about our big priorities, we're social, emotional health and well-being and that accelerated learning. Another way to leverage that work is by investing in and supporting pilot projects that we can bring to scale to use to help move the rest of the state forward. So the early learning center in Council Bluffs was again, a project that they had been working on. The superintendent there had been very active in engaging with funding and they had the, the model in place that we're gonna help invest in along with some other expert partners to see, to see what we can learn from their work and figure out how we model and scale that out for the rest of the state and understand what things might need to be changed and how we can leverage some of those best practices as well. These are two examples and these will not be the only ones. So as we continue to invest our funds in the right work, we will be bringing to you other examples of models and pilots that we'll be using, but I wanted to make sure you had information on these.
Awesome.
Yep. The next one then, and this is just more of a informational one, is if you recall, these are two different ones. So pass them around and then pass them back.
Dean?
I took mine, thank you. If you remember, I spoke even last year about the Reimagine Grant that we applied for the seventeen millions and what was awarded. And we're implementing the Iowa Learning Central that incorporates a platform and coursework to exchange information and learning and is, has courses being written by Iowa educators, for Iowa educators. We had sort of a soft launch of that yesterday and today at the School Administrators of Iowa Conference. Brad and Amy and his team were able to actually have a live demonstration of what it's gonna look like. And this is just an overview of some of the resources and the phases of the work that we'll be going through. There'll be some schools that are able to utilize this right away this fall. And then we continue to look at how we're gonna expand the courses that are offered through this sort of repository. This is not Iowa Learning Online. This is not a platform and this does not provide an educator, but it provides the means for educators to connect, to draw down these courses for free, to use them in their classrooms, for students to connect with another district that might be offering the course. And ideally, we'll start to develop more of those kind of hard-to-fill areas such as CTE courses. I think there was a foods class that was designed that we're excited about or will be designed, will be designed. That will be a great resource for a lot of, you know, there's a lot of hard-to-fill school, fill content areas. And this really kind of helps fill some of those needs and support students in different ways and districts and teachers. So we're excited about that as well.
Will this help with the offer and teach requirements? So if a teacher needs to, they can use this course instead of hiring a teacher to.
So you'd have to still have a teacher, but what you could do is you could say, you know, we have this course, but I need to take a class from a school somewhere else. It's built to be, you can use it online. So the coursework is developed so I could, rather than driving to your school to take the class, I could join electronically and we know that they have the course available.
Okay.
It, it helps too then if you don't have the content, you can draw it down, but you still have to have that educator. So you could share through a district virtually until some of those.
Nice. Those requirements, yep.
Yep.
Item two, as far as the review of what's, I'm assuming people from the D U will be doing the review of what's submitted.
Yeah, so there is a whole team and a process for reviewing the materials and the course submission. So this isn't just anybody can write something and post it's available. It goes through that same screening process for good curriculum and good content and our team does that. So teachers apply and then they're chosen to write the coursework and then it still, still has to go through that review. So then that we know that everything that we're sharing is the right work and has been vetted in the right way.
Are the teachers compensated for?
Yes, they are. And we are actually able to increase the compensation by, teachers are either providing the, the content or also the, the curriculum support. Am I saying it the right way?
The teacher materials.
The teacher materials. They can receive seventy-five hundred dollars for each. So you could get fifteen thousand dollars for doing this work, which I think is great. And you could do as many as you want. And I, if you recall, last year when we first put out this pitch or this request, remember that we were starting last year. And even in that context, we had, I think, like seventy educators apply. And we've seen that grow. And so it's a great, it's just such a good thing and a great way to celebrate the talent of our educators in Iowa. So that's kind of a quick overview. I wanted to make sure you at least have this. And if you have any other questions, you know, please let me know going forward. But I thought these are great ideas and gave you some information on some of the work that we're doing. We have anything over there.
Oh, thank you. All right.
The other thing then, just real quick, is that I wanted to provide one of the things we talked about potentially with the, the board is that we've tried to really move more towards electronic resources and sharing information that way. And a question to board members is, would it be, would there be any value to you if we provided you with a device or had devices here as a loner to help make that process easier? I think we did this at the Board of Educational Examiners, a little different context where everybody had their own laptop. It's just. It's just used for your state work. That's how you get your state email. That's how we share all the content with you. And you either take it home with you or bring it here, or we just leave them here for you to use. But any thoughts on interest, if you think that would be valuable or not?
There's no value for me. I have so many other devices. I have probably three computers.
I was about to say, I was like, not another device. I was like, oh my gosh.
Unless it was left here.
Unless it was left here.
I was, yeah.
What's the value as opposed to security?
Um, it's just an easy way to ensure that we're just sharing it in the right way. And, and I think there is some question of, we want to make sure you're checking your state email accounts regularly. Because that information is there. And so maybe we had this identified device. Or if we just kept them here so that, you know, if you're traveling, I mean, paper's fine too, but I think there's just a lot of things we could share with you this way. Sometimes we have links. If it would be a nice tool for you. It's just something, an option I wanted to bring to the table for your consideration.
I really like using my iPad when I have it, but I forgot it today. So I'm very thankful to have a. And so maybe that's the, you know, that's, that's nice that you have that available for those of us who maybe don't have.
Electronically or digitally or whatever, even to have this ahead of time before the meeting digitally.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna lean on Mike. Mike is gonna say this. I know Mike is gonna say this. I like paper.
Mike likes paper.
I'm like, when I'm out and about and I'm having waiting, I have to wait for something. I do pull up the website and read the material prepared. But when I'm studying, really thinking, I need paper.
And then you want to take notes and stuff during the meeting and stuff. You want paper. Yeah. So I can understand that.
Would be good for me.
We already know Mike wants paper. So.
So I'm not, I'm not getting a sense that anybody feels like they need us to get them a computer. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay. What about having some here available as loners if needed, just on standby?
I think that's a good idea. I think I like that.
Okay.
I do, the email issue though, how many people are actually checking? No, I'm, I'm not the best person, but I try to check it at least once a week. How many people are actually checking their email at least once a week?
At least once a week. I wish it was daily.
Every other week? Okay. I feel like we should all maybe try to make a commitment to try to check it maybe once a week, maybe on Fridays. Cause that's when you usually send your updates or maybe on like a Monday or something. Just, you know.
At least.
It's some, you know.
Cause it changed now. When you go in the Google.
Security.
It's like, it's like, um, I had to read, it's something different, something upgraded or it's a little bit different now.
Oh, I just have it on my phone. And when I go down on my phone, it's not any different, but maybe just because I already have it logged in on my saved in. When you go on the computer? Oh, I haven't tried it. What do you have to do?
Well, it takes you to it and then it asks you to.
Oh, is that something that you guys?
So maybe we shouldn't have skipped the David Google. We're just going to talk about that today.
Hey, David Google, David Google can tell you that there is a requirement, there is a requirement that occasionally you have to re-authenticate in the browser. So yeah, what you're experiencing is common. So.
Is that just when you're on a lap? Like it's on my cell phone. I haven't had that happen, but I just have a, you know, my account saved on my cell phone and is, so is it just when you're going on the computer or like an iPad or something or?
Probably so, because you're not using an application, you're using just the browser window. So my, and it's a guess, but my guess is you are correct. Because I can't recall having to do it on my own phone. So there you have it.
Okay.
I, I do check mine every day. I, I do like the articles. By Jim for updating what's going on.
Oh yeah. Those are, yeah, I at least, yeah, those are great. Yeah. Those come to my personal emails. I read those every day. Yeah. So I actually say that every day. Yes. Those are great.
And then the other thing too, remember we talked about sort of having that repository for sharing information and that Google drive as well. So it's just a great way to stay connected. So, so then just a reminder, yes, you can get those daily updates from Jim. We send a weekly update with updates for all of you as well. And then any other.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so it's.
Hey, that's good. She's positive, right? That's good.
Okay.
I like that.
So we will just continue with current practice. We'll have some devices available. Just a reminder to check regularly and appreciate your input on that. Something that's done for my part right now. So if you want to, if we want to continue or you want to take a break, it's totally. Really keep going.
So yeah, okay. How far are we behind schedule now? Should we keep on going?
We are, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Should we just keep on? Okay. Cause I think we're kind of behind. Okay. Let's just keep on going. Is that okay, everybody? All right. All right. So we're going to move now to the consent agenda. All right. Is there a second? It's been moved to second. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
This comment, I do like the thoroughness that you do for us with the, the public hearings and reporting. Very much appreciate.
I'm sorry. With the public comments?
Public hearings. Okay. I do have a question about all those public comments. What do we do with that?
So public comments are just public comments. In order for the board to have a conversation, we would have to identify that as an agenda item.
Cause it's not any of that.
There's not a agenda item today. Correct.
I was just, I just want to make sure.
Well, one of them is the one. One on the rule, you can.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. So everyone voted. All right. Well, I guess motion. All right. Tutorial on state board Google drive.
That's the part we're going to skip.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So.
Okay. That's cool. State board 2021 priorities and goals. Okay.
So now, so I have another handout for you again, and this is draft and discussion only. I'm going to give this, hand this out in two parts. First one, if you recall at our last meeting, we had a long conversation about board goals and priorities. And what's the responsibility of the department and what's the responsibility of the board? What are our action items? So I have a couple of things for conversation today. This one is going to be more just informational and it's a draft that the staff put together that took all of our goals that we currently have. And I think there was a question on how is it, how are they measured and what do we do with these goals? And how is the department engaged with each of them? This is a draft only. It is just for discussion. It incorporates some of the recommended changes that were offered during those small group conversations on actual board goals. But then it breaks it down into some additional categories in terms of what is the state board's legal authority? How does the department's work align with this goal? How do we, what is our priority work in each area and how are they measured? So if you look through all of the comments, you know, I think this is something that's probably, you know, we're not going to spend a lot of time really discussing this, but there was, I think, just to give the board a full understanding of the scope, the department's connection to these board goals. I thought it was important to share. What we will also do is we can share this with you electronically as well and bring it back for a conversation if you'd like to address it further or just use as an informational piece. So then we come back to that discussion next year on board goals and priorities. You already have the understanding of how the department is engaged with this. And then we can rethink how we might want to shift any of our goals based on that. So it's, it's, it's a lot of information. So I think we could spend a whole session just on this, but I wanted you to at least have that. And, and see if you had any questions or if you like the breakdown of how this is sort of set up. Or is that kind of what you were looking for in those conversations?
I think this is going to be really helpful to understanding kind of how everything, every piece kind of fits together. Cause I feel like sometimes we understand, or maybe we kind of understand where we are, but then maybe we don't know exactly what the department's been doing or who's been working on things and stuff like that. So I think it's nice to kind of have that whole picture for us. And then we can kind of have, I think our discussions will be better now that we have this information. So thank you.
So when you have a question about, you know, how are we addressing this? Here's a, here's a reference point. And then you might be able to say, hey, we would really like more information on this. Like this morning, we want more information on MTSS. Now that we've had a conversation about that and that aligns with a lot of our priorities. This gives you the knowledge that you need to ask better questions. Sorry, Brian, what are you going to ask?
So like soon we would approve this and then revisit it?
Well, I, I think we don't need to. So in our last, at our retreat, you know, we spent three hours talking about our, our goals and priorities. And, and I'm not sure we really landed any, I have another piece for you that we're going to address actually with that. But during that conversation, there was the question of how does the department's work align with these goals? And we tend to find ourselves, we're smearing the goals rather than identifying and focusing on the actions. So I wanted this piece available to you. There were some changes based on the goals, but I don't know that we need to really change them right now because the work aligns with how they're already written. But I wanted you to have this as a reference point. And then you could tell me if you do want to have a vote and an action on it, we could schedule that. Otherwise we really wouldn't come back to it till next year. It, it just felt that after the conversation, we didn't have the right information that we needed. And so I asked our staff to really put some, some, some details behind this and show the connection for you. So you had that as a resource. And then what I do want to talk about is the board's connection to the work. And that's what we're going to talk about next.
I do like this layout. I would hope maybe that particularly the information that the department collects could be available to the board either quarterly or halfway through. So rather than just wait until the end of the year and see what you've collected and maybe how we're progressing in the middle of the year.
On, on, on a specific thing.
Your, the department measures. Is that, do you have that monthly? I mean, is that available monthly or is it usually at the end of the year?
Usually those are, you know, a, a annual review, but they aren't all necessarily collected or available at the same time. So, and there's a lot. So I think that my bigger question is, I don't know if you really want all of that all the time, but I think you want targeted.
Or C or D or.
Yeah.
You know, break it up into five.
And then we could tie, have those as like on a rolling high basis kind of thing. But I would also, as you, as you guys are, has there come up available?
So I think we, we share those now, but maybe we need to be more, um, let's have a strategic, I'm looking at my data people over here and Shan's raising her hand. Um, go ahead, Chan.
I was just going to say, that's part of what we look at with the agenda. So we do look at goal, the, the board's goals and objectives when we're looking at agenda items that we want to have program staff bring to them. So that is something that's brought into the process.
So when it aligns to the conversation, we bring it in. But I think also we do incorporate a lot of the reports that we submit and share with the board. So the question would be, which ones do you want more of a conversation on? We're happy to make that available.
Just, it just feels like part of a, the board's job is oversight and to make sure that the goals are what's happening in case we're asked about it. I, I don't, I'm not trying to control that. I just like to be aware of.
Sure. What, what we might be able to do is if we have an electronic version of this, uh, you know, hyperlink the report to each of the accountability measures so that you can just go to it and see it whenever you would want it.
That's good. Yeah. Sorry. Also on each of these, uh, cause I know on some of them, like when we were talking, some of them, we wanted maybe some more, um, just to kind of dig a little deeper, dive a little bit deeper. So I think it would be nice if we had some of our, are we calling work sessions still or?
Yes.
Knowledge acquiring sessions.
Yep.
On these so that we could just kind of dig a little deeper and we would watch the videos and then we could kind of have more, just so that we, we know kind of, we have a more of an understanding. I think that'll help us when we get the reports or whatever, to be able to ask you appropriate questions and know what we're looking at and things like that. So.
I would, you know, the department collects tons and tons of, a more of a, give it to me and a brief executive.
Yeah. I love all.
I guess the only, the only comment I have, and maybe you'll get to this too, Anne, is that we have the, uh, part measures of this goal and they're all listed there. I'd like to know maybe towards the end of the year or whenever it makes sense is that in general, how, how are we doing on these goals? For example, I'm just looking at the, the first one as far as the equity and education and course enrollment trends by student groups. Is there a report out on that or just a, a link that could be given us so that we know that something is happening?
And Jay's nodding yes. So I think there's some information we would have that he would be able to share. Yeah. So I think, so as you ask that question, what we want to be able to show is, is not only access to the information, but maybe a short, this is kind of our assessment of our progress. Linked right in here. I mean, I think, and again, this is just an initial draft of an idea, but I think this, if you're, if you like this, this could really be built into something that's a, a living document that could be accessible regularly for the information that you need.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, excuse me.
And Shan brought up is that mostly the items are on the agenda are linked to our priorities and, and goals. I do appreciate.
Well, I just, as long as I really appreciate this. I think it's something that's been on my plate for, for several years. That we in fact try to align what we're doing with what you're doing and we'd be sure that our focus is your focus back and forth. So I really appreciate your effort and the, and the staff's effort on doing this. I think it does a work in progress. I think we, we'll get it better if we go along.
And just as a reminder, everybody on each agenda item, when you have that packet of information, executive summary has, it says state board priority. And it says which state board priority. So when you are reading through the packet, it would be nice to maybe if we had that, you know, information available, then you could kind of maybe click on it and see kind of what, you know, and see and get more information. If you're kind of more interested in something on a certain priority, if that was your priority that you're really interested in, then you could get that information, knowing that this agenda item is coming up. It's linked to this priority. This is what we're discussing kind of thing. So I think that's great.
Okay. Okay. Where's coming that? Perfect. So now the next piece is our transition into then, so what does that mean for you guys? And I think there was some challenge in terms of, you know, what's, what, what's your role as a board member in engaging with this work? So we have, I have a proposal for you that we've shared with Betty and Brooke. I have a proposal that's here. I'll wait till everybody gets it and we'll talk about that as well. So where we really sort of seem to struggle, and this is incorporating two different things is one is, you know, what do we actually do as a board member to show that we're engaging in this work? And then as we, you know, each time we meet, we have these board reports and, and it's sort of, um, there's that really consistency in what we're reporting about. So what, what should you be reporting on? And what should you be sharing in your engagement as a board member? So, so, um, we propose, uh, three simple steps. And then I'll talk about what the script is that every board member at some point throughout each year will do three things. One, you will visit a school and share what you learned. Two, you will visit with a legislator and build relationships all year round. I think we had a long conversation about subcommittee work and, and what that looks like, but really is that getting to the heart of what we want to do? You individually taking this action step yourself. And then three, sharing, you know, do you belong to or participate in something that brings value add to the board? You know, John often shares his, his accreditation visits. You know, Kimberly is, shares her equity where we all have something, but, but truly identifying what it is. And then each month, depending on what you have completed of these three steps in our board reports, you could share that out with the rest of the group. It helps identify your engagement and it gives you clear, simple action steps to follow along. Now the rest of this document is meant to be sort of again, a draft script of if I'm going to go visit a school or I'm going to engage with the legislator, what, what are we talking about? So I asked our staff to align questions with each of the existing state board goals and priorities, just like we did with the department and gave you options of things you could ask to help facilitate that dialogue for you in your action steps.
This is great. This is beautiful.
Is it good? So I, I think I got the sense that we felt like we just don't know where to start and there's so much. So let's just, let's just reset, do some simple things and see where this leads us. So thoughts on again, this is a draft. Is this the right format? And I guess my bigger question is, um, your thoughts on the, the action steps?
So how we can use this is like these questions, if we're on like onsite at a school and you're asking about improving teaching leadership, this is like a guide.
Yep. Those are questions you could ask. And then we all kind of have a sense of what we could be asking and what we share. You certainly don't just have to ask these things, but these questions directly align with our board goals and help provide the tool for you to engage in this conversation.
I like this format. I noticed you have a column, questions to ask when visiting a school. Am I missing the one on what to ask legislators?
Oh, sorry. I just made them, I just asked them put questions generally. So I think we could do a specific separate legislative question.
I think that'd be helpful.
Um, I was just, you know, let's put some questions in. That was my first one. So.
I have a quick question. Okay. So I don't have access to these documents right now, like my internet's really spotty and I keep coming in and out of the Zoom call. So is there opportunities for me to provide some feedback after the meeting is over as well?
Oh, of course. Yep. Everything will get shared electronically. And I hope you provide feedback. And again, these are just drafts, but you know, I wanted to bring something to you that really maybe was more tangible and helped better define how we can use our goals and priorities versus just having a conversation about them. you know, I wanted to bring something to you that really maybe was more tangible and helped better define how we can use our goals and priorities versus just having a conversation about them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna.
So we're comfortable with this as our action and it's nothing we have to vote on and it's not an action item, but I just think it's something we can all do and it will help better guide our work.
I'm just thinking in the fall, particularly when the department is putting together its legislative priorities, there would be certain questions we could ask legislators early on before they have everything decided come January, um, that we could visit with them about.
Could we get, um, like a timeline of, uh, when the department puts together legislative priorities and meetings and things like that? Just so that we just have an awareness. Cause I know IWD like we have like a whole, like, you know, by this date, we have to have things submitted to the governor's office. We have to have this by, you know, I mean, so we have like a whole timeline for the next four or five months.
We have that, so we'll make sure we share it.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, I think.
So legislative questions here and then, um, links on the other one to the reports and then, um, any updates as we go forward. That's good.
Is this going to go on the Google Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll make them, we'll make them live. So they'll be in that Google Drive so you can access and we'll just send them to you too. Like I can send it to you in email and then you could click on it. It'll take you there. We can store them in the drive also.
Okay, perfect.
This is a lot of work and I just want to thank you and the staff.
Yeah, I love this.
Got a little question for you. Do you think this, because there's so much data, it's hard to put a red, yellow, green? We are good, we're, we're, we're target, we're green, for our target is for yellow. Well, we might be behind.
Like we do with Davenport. Yeah. I was thinking that. I was like, that'd be nice. And we could see kind of are we red, yellow, green? Yeah. It would be nice to, yeah.
Sure.
I like that.
I'll put that suggestion down. We'll figure out what that could look like. Okay, great. Awesome. That's all I have then. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to put back to my agenda. Oh, they were subcommittees. All right. So I'm gonna take one. There we go. Pass these around. Thank you.
So I wasted paper because I made a copy of the same thing.
Are you dead?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So this is, this is operating guidelines, number six. This is your current existing standard operating procedure on, uh, special assignment for board members, including committees and subcommittees. Your, you have made the decision to operate under Robert's rules in a different operating guideline. And Robert's rules has some specific language about committees or subcommittees. And that a committee has less authority to act independently for the society than a board. So the committee has less authority to bind you than the, than you all have to bind yourself. And whenever a committee is appointed, it has to have, um, a, a discrete function. Either on a standing basis, the equity committee or an ad hoc basis, a, a special subcommittee or committee on legislative priorities. So when a committee is appointed or a subcommittee is appointed, um, it is, uh, of a limited power. And Robert's rules recommends unless otherwise specified that the actions or the decisions come back to the committee as a whole. So that whenever a subcommittee makes a recommendation or a committee makes, makes a recommendation, it brings that recommendation back to the board or action as a whole. Since it's a committee recommendation, there's no need for a second. Uh, you just dive right into discussion and vote. Um, and that is echoed in your operating guideline, number six. Sub B, so general guidelines for board members. So whenever there's an assignment to an internal committee or sometimes an external committee, state board representation is needed on the, this other ad hoc committee that another agency is formulating, the computer science. We need a state board representation, a member to represent the state board's interest on this external committee or subcommittee.
Does that mean that, that the information collected by that committee or recommendation by that committee would stay within the committee until you report back to the board's own?
Well, the committee discuss, committee conducts its own business, but it, the product it generates come backs to, comes back to the board as a whole.
Yeah.
Sure. And committees are able to operate on much sort of looser rules. They're not bound by the particularities of Robert's rules. You know, the committee can form whatever business rules it has to get its business done promptly and efficiently. Uh, there's no need for like motion to call the question, motion for this, so long as the committee agrees on its report or its report and recommendation with recognizing any dissent. So two members of the committee sign off on this report. One member of the committee thinks it's not, it's not the third bowl of porridge. It's not too hot, it's too hot or too cold. We, we, but then that report comes back to you all for a decision as a whole, unless you specifically authorize the committee to act on your behalf, which would be rare because this is, this is not a private board. It's not a board of directors of a corporation. This is the government. So I, I struggle to conceive of a situation where a committee would bind the state board as a whole, just because this is the, we're, we're the government. So general guidelines for board members B, so sub B on page 14. Assignments when appropriate shall be accompanied by the explanation of the purpose, responsibility, charges and granted authority. So purpose, and this is perhaps where the committee's work or the subcommittee's work aligns with the goals that was, were discussed in the prior agenda item. Like what is, what are we doing? Responsibility, uh, the board can do, the subcommittee can do X, Y, and Z. The subcommittee can gather information or data A, B, and C. Charges, you know, by when, by, by a date in time, the board expects the following deliverable. And then granted authority, your authority is to make a report, your authority is to make a recommendation, your authority is to draft a proposal. Or your authority, your authority is to represent the state board's interests in an informational capacity on this external, the separate external board. So committees and subcommittees are invaluable to doing business. It separates wheat from chaff to allow the committee as a whole to focus on the most needful things, the most promising proposals. But with and committees have some latitude in how they conduct their business. But the bottom line here is the committee, committee makes recommendations, which the committee as a whole or the state board must adopt. So if you have questions as a specific committee evolves, whether it's standing, special purpose, ad hoc, please feel, feel free to reach out. But just a reminder from your, you know, this is a status quo document. It's what you all have agreed to bind yourselves by. The, it makes a specific explanation for how committees are to function and what their roles are. So with that, questions, comments, insults?
What happens if you have something to bring back to the board, the subcommittee brings back to the board, but the board doesn't meet until there's a time issue? How do you handle that?
And I think that that's something that you maybe preemptively discuss with, uh, the chair, with the president or with staff. Um, and you know, wire that, hardwire that in from the, from this outset, like we, this deliverable, try to sync up the deliverables with, with meetings. If it is something that is of an emergency nature, the board can always call itself in the special session or call a special meeting, but that would be, that's Davenport level stuff.
Any question? When it says board representative, percent or ratio or?
Well, this is a small committee of a whole to begin with. And so we're, we're not like, um, we're not, we're not the general assembly. And so I would defer to, uh, President Axiotis about how that, how those things are balanced out. It may, cause sometimes there's talent, interest availability and then gender balance and balancing assignments. So there's nine of you plus a student member.
Yep.
So, you know, that's a consideration, not a requirement for, for a larger body like the general assembly or a, a larger, you know, a 21 person board versus a nine person board, that might be a little bit more. But it, it's hard to do that. It's hard to do guideline A, second sentence with mathematical precision on a nine person board. All of, all of you have much broader commitments beyond this board anyway. So, um, I think it's something for the, for the president to take, to take consideration of. When making assignments, but there are other things to consider as well.
I have one other question.
Okay.
So, um, this is like, we're learning, I'm learning backwards, but so we have this, uh, our committee, equity committee worked on this. So we had a, okay. So we have a legislation on the committee. And, uh, at the end of the day, uh, we have this Senate filing that, uh, went through the Senate through Sinclair that we helped give input on. And, uh, I was talking offline, mind you, we didn't go through this. Now we know, but now it passed unanimous way in the Senate and it got, it got held and it wasn't on the agenda for the House. So we want to bring it back. So what, what is it? How does that look like to bring it back to the board first? So what's, what's the protocol? Cause I don't really understand this next legislative session, how do we get it in front of them? But before that, how do we bring it back to the state board?
Well, this is a, the equity committee is a, um, sort of a blended committee because it has external members also, many of whom are, you know, they're, they're not, you know, a legislator is, a legislator is going to do what a legislator is going to do. And so that, that's an odd partnership. Doable, but odd. So as far as the board member, as far as the board members of this committee, the equity committee, bringing things back to the state board, for a recommendation, this is something to work with the, uh, board president and staff to get it on the next agenda. It, you know, my take is it has to be listed as an agenda item because it's, uh, doing the people's business. Uh, it needs to be on the agenda. So if there's going to be a committee recommendation, uh, one of which the equity committee is going to have, I'm assuming more than one recommendation. Or it's going to be a rolling set of recommendations. When the equity committee acts, when the equity committee is ready to make a report out to the general, to the committee as a whole, to the board, uh, that's something to, um, work with staff and most importantly, the, uh, the board president to make sure it's on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And just be mindful that when Carol does email out, you know, we have to abide by those dates that she sends out. So in order to get agenda items on this goes for anybody, we have to make sure that, you know, we're letting, giving her enough because she has to put everything together. So just, we just make sure that we are not know an agenda item the week before. She gives us a date, we have to learn by that date.
I also think Brooke here, suggestion, you could press us out there and the timelines would be helpful.
Helpful, yeah. Cause then we would know, right? Yeah.
When you have to have it here.
And then I hope so with our committee meetings, because it's going to all get, it's, that's, that's a constraint.
Yeah, yeah. And you know that we don't meet again till September.
And then November. Don't have it together right now. It's.
Yes, Jan.
I have a point. Um, so I think during you guys' last meeting, you guys had talked about which subcommittee you do want to develop. So I think what we thought was with these action steps that you guys have with your goals and priorities, that might lead you guys, as you guys are working on these action steps, to what might be appropriate subcommittees moving forward.
Yeah. And before we have that discussion, I actually just wanted to get a general sense of subcommittees in general. I mean, I, I think that we all think they're great, but I think that also, um, it's another commitment that we'd be, you know, asking of our board members who are, I mean, I think everyone has other commitments. And so I think that before we decide that we want any other subcommittees and whether that's a good idea or not, I think we would need a commitment from people to actually serve on them because I don't think there's a point in even having that discussion if we don't have people to serve on them.
And one of the things that could be considered, back to Shan's point, is the rules do draw a distinction between standing and ad hoc. So if it's a time limited thing, I, I have the ability as a board member to serve for the next three months, working on this project. But beyond that, I can't, I can't make a commitment beyond that. That might, you know, a lot of the priorities, uh, from the spreadsheets that were handed out might be things that are handled on an ad hoc basis. We have a short meeting, we bring a deliverable, we, the board acts and adopts and then monitor progress. And there's less of a need for a standing committee to monitor progress than a ad hoc committee to develop a product.
So if we had maybe an ad hoc committee or something that was maybe more temporary or short term in nature, I guess, how are people feeling about that? How are members feeling about, I mean, would they have time to even dedicate to meeting outside of this meeting? Maybe once a month or something?
I think, I think this board probably doesn't need standing committees. I say that and then I know you kind of at one time wanted a legislative standing committee, but I'm not sure we need standing committees.
I wasn't really married to standing. I mean, I just kind of, I mean, I think, I think we could do it for maybe six months a year and then see how things, I'm not, I don't think that we need to do it indefinitely, right? I think that it just, whatever we need for the needs of the board.
Anyway, I was, what I was gonna say is that might be a little bit different. But I think for the most part, what, what we may need from time to time is ad hoc committees. I, I don't think this board needs standing committees. That's my opinion. And certainly, yeah, ad hoc committees, uh, you know, I'm very willing to serve on an ad hoc basis from time to time on issues that are important to the board that need to be researched or discussed further than what we have time to do here, that kind of thing.
Anyone else's thoughts?
I, I agree with Betty. I think that there's some that could be on an ad hoc basis.
Subcommittee assignments and availability or willingness to serve, that's, some of those questions will be resolved as far as what makes sense is that, should this be a standing or just an ad hoc? What makes sense at that time?
And sometimes it might start as an ad hoc and then you might want to just continue it, you know, that's fine too. I mean, I think we need to be open.
I have a deep board.
Excuse me.
There were some standing committees that were specific to do the work, uh, items that needed to be reviewed by the board. So like for all the financial assistance packages, somebody had a committee that reviewed all that and brought it forward. You know, so in those situations, there's very specific purposes for it, is to kind of vet some of that ahead of time. So I don't know if that's something that we need to think about is or things that need to be vetted before we get, which leads to your legislative one, because I think people have a lot of questions about that. And then how do you look at different proposals and make sure you bring some of that forward?
And it sounds like, I mean, uh, I mean, if we had something with, I mean, because equity committee, I mean, I think that would be helpful, you know, to, I mean, cause I, and I think that any, you know, I mean, so I think that that would be something that would maybe, cause it kind of overlaps and kind of, it can help other committees as well. So does anyone have any, um, I mean, I know we have, so we have the equity committee. So does anyone think that we should, yes, sorry.
I think I like the ad hoc also. I might get to the, have the ending.
Yep.
And you're focusing on just one, one project, one task.
Yeah.
Get a win.
And then you can, yeah. And then just, yeah. And even if it's a standing committee, I mean, we could always change, you know, people from, I don't think that someone just needs to take the brain for six years of their entire service on the state board of education. I think that's ridiculous, right?
I have an external one. I'd be happy to hand off to the new board member.
Can you try again, please?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Sorry. I was trying to, I was trying to interview you to make a point earlier when you were talking about the committees. I think that the equity one is pretty important to have year round. But then also it'd be pretty important to have a student voice one and a legislative one as well. I mean, that's a student voice one I could take the lead on. But I think that those are two very important committees. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about, when, uh, Kimberly was talking earlier in the meeting, but I wasn't able to make interject, um, is the topic of timeliness. And I know that last board meeting, we had a lot of discussion about what, uh, role we play as state board members and what we can do to, um, speak out, uh, against certain legislation. And I think that, uh, because we're able to spoke, to call special sessions, we need to step up and, uh, before our next meeting to have a discussion about the ban on mask mandates and have a discussion about it. Because I know as a student, it's going to be extremely important for me. And to wait until September, I feel like is unfair just parents and students. And to wait until September, I feel like is unfair to parents and students in community school districts.
Madam Chair, one final comment about sort of like the workload for committees. And one, one of the suggestions based on some external committees I've been on is the subcommittees meet before the committee as a whole. And so maybe the work session is periodically, is not a work session, but a subcommittee session. So subcommittees go meet, prepare your reports to bring back to the board. And so that's an hour of time that is within your discretion. And I, you know, work sessions are invaluable, but I think you should be in charge of your own work. And if that topic needs, I mean, this was an important topic today, not, not minimizing it, but other topics might be something where, you know, water, finite amount of time, this hour should, is subcommittee work. We need to defer that work session to, or reschedule the work session. So I would offer that to your consideration. It's worked well on some of the, some of the other, other duties assigned I've been on for the subcommittees to meet before the committee as a whole.
I do kind of like the student voice example because we always are asking, you want to know their voice? So we can take certain questions to that student voice group. We get that, it's kind of like voice for customer, get that back. And because with so many different topics, as we know, we just, we had equity and it was great. There was value there, but then we have mental health. We have all these, these different topics. I would love to have more voice, we can just send information to these students and then get it back from them.
I agree, I do.
So another thing I want to talk about too is, so if we have a committee, so if we have like a student voice committee, which I think is a great idea, then as board members, we need board members to sit on that committee, right? If it's a committee of our committee, then we need committee member, we need, you know, state board members to serve on that committee. And those need to be the voting members, right? So I think that we need to, there needs to be some kind of structure here. So like the equity committee, I think at one point you were maybe the only state board member. And so that's something that we need to remedy, right? So we need to have people, and that's why I'm saying, I mean, it's okay to have these, but we need state board members to serve on these committees because if it's just you, you're the only one, you know?
Hannah's not voting.
We need like some vote, yeah, yeah. No, you know, I understand what you're saying. So I mean, I would say at least maybe three state board members. I don't know why, that just seems like a good number in my head, but.
Do you support it per, per committee or per subcommittee?
Yeah, I think.
That's a lot.
But I mean, I feel like we're not going to have six subcommittees, right? So, and I'm willing to serve on one, but I mean, I just, I think that maybe three. Because I think that, you know, I think that's, I mean, you can't just have two, right?
I think, I think you really have to hone in on what the purpose of that subcommittee is because that's going to determine a lot. Maybe some, some committees may be shortened term as far as their length, but that's going to really depend on the purpose. And so if we're having a subcommittee on, on student voices, we need a clear definition of what that purpose is and some general guidelines as far as operations and expectations. Like that's how you get the purpose defined and what you're expecting out of that subcommittee. Just generalities are nice to discuss, but when it gets down to it, they need direction to the committee. He's directional, what their purpose is.
So, yeah, I agree. So I think that we would, as a state board, we would need to decide maybe what committees we would want to have and then we would need to come up with a purpose. And then, because we would actually need to ask the committee to do something, right? And prepare something or, I mean, they're actually being pulled together for a purpose, right? So I think that that's up to us to come up with that purpose and to ask that committee to do that. And then we can appoint people to that committee or I can.
My understanding of committees is the committee of the whole would say, here's what we want you to do. As opposed to form a committee and.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, so the state board members, like I think that we need to come up with, okay, we want to have this. Yeah, we need to say, okay, we want an equity committee and this is what we want the equity committee to do, right?
Exactly, yeah.
That's fairly laid out because of the goals and some of the other things that we have. Whereas some of the other things that have been suggested ad hoc, I think any of us are happy to work on one, depending on.
What the needs.
When it comes up and what it's about. But I can think of a couple, just from what I heard today in public comment that. But, you know, to me, this brings, this still goes to what's the role vis a vis the department versus the state board? You know, there's legislative people at the department, right? I mean, so what is the state board going to?
Well, I think the state board would probably, I mean, and yes, there's legislatively people at the department, but I think the state board, and we're not, I mean, I think that we have our priorities and our goals. And so I think that if, if we want to talk to a legislator about our priorities and our goals, then that's okay, right? And if we, if we see if we can get some.
You can do that now, right?
Yeah, but I mean, if we had a committee, maybe if we wanted to like, kind of just kind of funnel everything through one and then say, who knew, I mean, because right now, I mean, I don't know how many, I don't, me personally, I mean, I don't have time to keep track of stuff. I'm trying to do that for my own job, right? So I don't have time to do that for the state board of education. But if we had a committee whose job was just, they were tasked without the legislator to watch these bills and see what's happening, contact legislators on behalf of this, if we test them with that, then I think that would be, you know, but we don't have to do that, you know? I don't know.
There's a difference between, let's use a state legislative example you gave. It's one thing if I sit down and talk with a legislator or two as a person, but if I'm appointed by the, the state board in this official capacity, it gives a little bit more, I won't say clout, but a little bit more authenticity to, to my.
Then I need to be carrying the water of this group, not my own.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
Because you're talking about our goals and priorities that we voted on, right? Yeah, exactly.
Well, solution, you know, probably a search of a problem. And maybe, I think maybe, I've served for, this is my 10th year, 9th year on a state board. I don't know if you've ever had a standing committee. I don't think we've ever had one, Michael, correct me.
The only committee that we've really had is the Community College Council.
Yeah.
That's kind of external.
That's by.
Yeah.
It seems to me when a problem exists, then we can do the committee, I think it is, committee work. And it doesn't take, doesn't take pre, previous action. Do that, that we're forming a committee and have a study that issue. I do like Hannah's input and I do like the student input. I thought it was really effective to have the four kids here who are here, young ladies who are here. We did a marvelous job and I think give real heart to the work that we're doing. So I like that. I don't know how we incorporate that, incorporate that information or do we regularly ask Canada, bring some young people in to speak to us about the issues that they think are fundamental. And I think that helps keep us focused. But as far as a, a group here, again, I think if we have a problem and we want to study it, we're going to do it.
I think to Mike's point, my experience has been if, if an issue comes before the board, we tend to ask the staff to investigate that issue and then come back and report to us. And then as a board, we make a decision. So maybe we, we don't need a lot of subcommittees.
Yeah, I don't think we need a lot, yeah.
Then we act as a board.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think subcommittees are just kind of to go a little bit deeper on a certain topic, you know? So I think a lot of times when we hear these reports or we have this information, we, we a lot of times think like, wow, you know, I wish I had more time on this. I wish I could, you know, because a lot of times we're moving from one agenda item to another. And we max spend a half an hour or an hour talking about something, right? So a subcommittee will allow maybe a deeper dive into that or a conversation. And then maybe actually we could say, we want you to prepare this special report or something. So come back to us with this or something, you know? So I think that that, that would be, I guess, in my view, the point of the subcommittee is just that we just, we're limited in time on how much time we can spend on each agenda item. We just don't have that kind of time. So if you wanted to say like, I don't know, you guys, and I missed a discussion this morning on competency based education, there was something that came out of that where you guys were like, I want to learn more about something and then there is something that wanted to be reported back out to the board, then I think a subcommittee be formed. And that doesn't have to be a long drawn out thing that could meet one or two times and then report out, right? So, but that would be a subcommittee, right? We just have to have some structure in place.
Like I'm thinking, maybe Larry can jump in on this. A few years back, we were concerned about the teacher prep programs. And so the staff worked on reports, gave us information, we discussed it back to them, we discussed it more. So we did act as a full committee in that sense.
Yeah, you know, now that you bring that up, it was the teacher prep programs dealing with dyslexia. And we had a couple of presentations and so I can remember, because I served on that. I think there were two board members and, and you.
I remember that, yeah.
The people and.
We had about 15 people.
Yeah.
Ironed out.
And we did, we ironed it out, we brought it back to the board and the board said, yeah, we like that. That's going to be our position on it. That's the kind of thing.
That's like an ad hoc committee, yeah.
Yeah, that's what an ad hoc committee is. That's the kind of thing, I think. We don't need to spend a whole lot of time, I don't think, trying to establish permanent committees. We do it as it comes up like that. And that worked really good. I kind of forgotten about that.
But we do have a committee that we have established that is, you know, the equity committee. So I mean, do we, I mean, do we not want to keep that or do we, I mean, am I hearing that people are? I mean, I think that that work is important. So, and I, but I think that if we are going to keep that committee, I think we need to, I mean, and we do have, you know, our, the goals, but I think that maybe you said that maybe having something, one thing to focus on would be good.
I would like to migrate, I think, do we lose, what's the pros and cons, I think, of, of ad hoc versus standing? And honestly, there's no other board member that's on the committee. Nobody has really raised a hand to say, hey, Kim, I want to be a part of it either.
And that's probably.
So I recognize that and it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work. So what I recommend is let's focus on one, one, and I would like to look at this, this current research that's out there that we have, Kendi. Get, bring that to the board, figure out what to do with that. And then, and it focuses on, it focuses on getting more students of color in the education pipeline, basically. So the question, and then, and then go from there.
So maybe that's like, so then that's, so we won't even call it an equity or legislative committee. This is a committee to do this.
Yeah.
So.
It's very descriptive.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if it, you know, and then let's go for that because we need momentum.
Yeah.
And, and you know, and if, and I, I need to feel like I'm helping this.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
I really need to.
And I think it's good to have that one thing to focus on. And so I think that maybe we can put that on the, put that agenda for this September.
I'm sure you're ready for it and I can even.
And then if people are interested in serving on that or else I'll just appoint you guys, I guess. I mean, but I think we need a couple of people, a couple of members to serve on that.
I did ask someone, but I'll ask again.
At our last board.
Yep, you said, yep. And so, and I think Georgia, you'd be great to serve on that as well. So I think that we can just, well, I mean, if there's legislation and so, and I think also having that, the timeline would be helpful as well.
Is it ad hoc?
Yeah.
Or is it standing? Does it matter?
I don't know. I don't think it matters right now. I think you guys are tasked with something and I think that once that's done, then we can reevaluate. All right, so do we need to?
Standing is a purpose for the board on a, on a board.
On a continual kind of, yeah.
Continual, so that's why I kind of gave that description.
Yeah.
What we did at Economic Development. I mean, something that's needed for the function of the board, the board needs to always be reviewing. That is like a standard.
A lot of times those are in code like the, the standard, like we have IWD, this, that we have standing committees, but those are laid out in code. And just like the Community College, that's laid out in code. So a lot of times those are, because they perform specific functions as, as are laid out in code. So, yeah, I think that's, I think this is a good start.
Yeah, most, most school boards have a development committee, an HR committee, a finance committee. We don't have that.
No, we don't have those functions, thank goodness.
Excuse me.
We're not raising money.
And we're not hiring. So that's good. Yeah. All right. Yes.
Hannah's been trying to do input, Hannah.
Oh, sorry.
Can you try there?
Poor Hannah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think, yeah. So I was just trying to interject earlier. I think I might have cut out right after I was talking about the student voice teams in the committee. But I just wanted to bring up that I think sometime in this meeting, we need to address the public comment. Because last board meeting, we talked a lot about our own roles as, as board members. And I think that it's really important to address before September because as a student and for other parents of students in the community, it's, it's a very timely issue. If we wait too long, we won't be able to, to address it.
Thanks, Hannah.
Let's take a quick five minute break and let the presenters get set at the table. David, we're going to take a quick break. You can hear him, I know you stepped out, I'm going to mute.
Thomas.